Thank you, welcome to our meeting of September 1st, 2015. Please note that the council is in full attendance, of course, and welcome to everyone that's here. We'll go straight into our agenda. We have items from council. We do have one item specifically. I see Mr. Fowler is here from VEDC. I believe he has something to share with us.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you an award that our community has won. Each year, the Southern Economic Development Council, which represents 17 states across the southern part of the U.S., southeast part of the U.S., gives an award, a Community Economic Development Award, for communities in five different size categories. And the Texas Economic Development Council nominated Victoria for the category of 40,000 to 100,000 population. And just wanted to share with you that Victoria was awarded the award for that size community this year. And there's a lot of competition. This primarily was awarded for the economic development efforts. The council certainly participated in the development of the Lone Tree 2 business park and the attraction of the first Caterpillar supplier into that park. And so, wanted to share this with the community and with all of you. And Mayor, you think we can get a picture?
Yeah, we sure can. That's outstanding.
I'd also like to bring my staff up. Sharon Bernard and Amber Vargas are here. Adrian Kennedy is on the road this evening, or he'd be here, so.
She sends the emails.
Well, congratulations Dale, and thank you, and your staff there. And now, you will be submitted for a national level award perhaps?
I'm not sure that it goes further than that, but we'll see.
Maybe? This is the region?
This is the southern region of the U.S., that's correct.
So how many regions you say there were?
There were 17 states represented in the Southern Economic Development Council. There's really, it's probably one of the largest economic development trade associations in the nation, next to the international.
Seventeen states, and you can name them all, couldn't you?
No, sir.
Just kidding. But congratulations, well deserved. Y'all have done a lot, so.
Thank you. Texas is the one I predominantly name.
Right, right. The only one that matters, huh? Okay. Council, so we're still items from council. Do y'all have anything in particular? Who wants to go first?
I just wanted to say, I've noticed that around the school, especially around the school areas, you know, the blinking signs, or a lot of them are covered, and the speed limit signs, some of them are covered.
With lambs?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if we do that, or the person that lives there has to do it, but, yeah, especially around the school districts area.
We'll do it if we know the locations, so we'll have a...
Okay.
Not a problem.
I'd like to bring up an item, I think for a future council meeting. I know that we cannot regulate people's pride in their homeownership, but I've received a number of contacts from various people, various locations, where the neighbors are not mowing their yards, or the neighbors are maintaining lots of vehicles in their yard. Some of them are offerable, some of them are not. It does pose a health hazard to some extent. You can have varmints living under unmoved cars. Tall grass brings in insects, brings in mice and things like that. You know, somewhere there's a balance between pride of ownership, between helping your neighbor, and on the other end is maybe absentee owners, or elderly folks that can't afford to take care of their property. There's a whole gauntlet of issues, and I would really like for us to look at those ordinances, see what kind of things can be done, see what kind of things really are private property responsibilities.
Perhaps a work session?
That would be good.
I would, it wouldn't hurt maybe just what's legal and what's not, what we can control and what we can't.
Right.
That wouldn't hurt, yeah. Because that is, we probably all get those calls, you know? Can that car be parked in the front yard for three months? Or if it, if it can, exactly where? Is it public, private property, so?
And grass that grows tall, but it's not tall enough for the city to be able to take action, but it's still an eyesore for the people around it. Maybe they don't want to trespass, maybe they, you know, aren't able to help take care of it.
And it, I would say certainly not a new topic that we hear about, but, yeah, we can, I would agree, that'd be great, so, okay.
In that workshop, could you include a code enforcement officer, so that way they could tell us what we can and cannot, that we can tell our constituents, well, this we can do, and this we can't, you know? Because they were the ones that issue out the warnings and stuff.
What's practical?
Yes.
Have we ever done regarding Channel 15, which is something I want to bring up? Have we ever done some videos about right, property rights and expectations on that? It seems like we have.
I've seen one.
Yes, we've actually done a Know the Code series that started years ago with mowing and, and some of the old ones we haven't redone lately, but Joshua Garrett, our multimedia specialist, has been getting with code enforcement, really working on problem issues, illegal dumping, the weedy lots, and other things that are really almost seasonal in nature. Yeah.
Okay, and now that it's raining again, it becomes more of an issue. And, you know, while, I had one item for council, just, it's really for OC, I wanted to congratulate him on the work you're doing with Channel 15. I happen to flip over to that channel once in a while, when I luckily am in front of the TV, which doesn't seem too often, but the, you have been interviewing veterans, and letting them talk and tell their story. I believe it was Mr. Easley, I recognized him.
Mm-hmm.
Don't call the first name, but that was amazing, and I would encourage everyone to check that out. He's living history, the things he saw, and I know there were others, Mr. Ledbetter and others that are members of our community, that it's truly amazing. And I've seen him in church for 30 years and did not know that about him. So, you know, I hope to be able to see him again and pat him on the back someday, but the work you're doing is great, so thank you for that.
Well, we appreciate that. We are doing a series on World War II veterans. Obviously, they're passing at a very rapid rate. And, and we have all those videos now on YouTube and on our VTV15.org site. And that's everything from P-38 pilots to Mrs. Mayor, who was actually, she was a court reporter at the Nuremberg Trials. And so, it's a, it's a vast range of people, and they're all within a few miles of Victoria, if not Victoria property. It's fascinating historical account of what the world was like during World War II.
The court reporter lives in Victoria?
She passed. And what's interesting, I think we have, we have maybe, we've probably done maybe 15 interviews, and maybe three or four are still alive. It's, they're passing very rapidly, and we're trying to get them all, all the World War II veterans anyway, as quickly as we can.
That's a wonderful service.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I wanted to piggyback on Ms. Scott, because I've been dealing with some right-of-way issues. I assume that's part of the discussion that we could bring forward to more detail to talk about the ordinance specifically, and who's, what we're expecting of our citizens as far as maintaining right-of-way, and reviewing that piece of it as well, if that's okay?
Some examples, and maybe perhaps, I know staff collects a lot of pictures, maybe pictures of problems and pictures of solutions, so, okay. All right, items from council, anything else? If not, we'll open Citizens Communication. Anybody here would like to speak just about anything at all? Now's the time? Okay. Seeing no one jump up, we'll close Citizens Communication and move into the rest of our meeting, which is ordinances.
Item C1 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the city of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory, consisting of approximately 2.686 acres of land, at the request of DGNP Incorporated, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item C1.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just wanted to point out that third, fourth whereas, I think that's supposed to be a 2015, but it's not, and nothing, right Thomas, that we need to worry about.
I'm sorry, where now?
Fourth whereas in the ordinance.
Your final plan?
There's a typographical error in the date.
Oh, June 18th instead of, yeah, 2014.
Should be 2015 instead of 2014.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The next two, just want to point out, are public hearings only, there will be no vote for the next two items.
Item C2 is a second public hearing on the 2015-2016 city Victoria tax rate.
So we'll open that public hearing. Anyone who wants to come speak to us just about the tax rate now would be the time to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing.
And item C3 is a second public hearing of the city of Victoria budget for the fiscal year 2015-2016.
We'll open the public hearing on the budget. Anyone like to speak to that item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the budget. Now, there'll be one more public hearing on both of those again next week.
Item C4?
No, it's next week.
Sorry.
This is our only meeting this week.
Okay.
Sorry to talk over you. Item C4 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the city of Victoria code, related to fees, to increase the fees for Boot Fest 2016 booth spaces, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on these?
We do need a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, excuse me, yeah. Need to open the public hearing on this item. Anyone who wants to discuss these fees now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. We do have a motion and a second. Is there discussion, staff, I mean, council?
No question.
Tony's here, OC's here, I'm here, Gilbert's here.
Should be able to find an answer amongst us.
Okay. Have you talked to any vendors about these fee increases? Is it going to cause anybody to drop out?
No, we have not yet. What we did is we analyzed what the other events around us are charging, and we found that this will place us in the middle for food vendors in terms of the fees being charged events, and a low end for the general merchandise vendors. The idea being that if you're willing to go and spend more to go to a 15,000-person attendance event, then it's reasonable for us to charge this much in the middle for an event that's much larger. So we're pretty confident that, the second part of that is, we actually have a waitlist for most of our vending spaces, so the confidence is there that we're not going to have an issue of being able to fill the spaces, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Tony, that's for a two-day permit, so that if you split it in half, it would be like for two different events?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And we do have the numbers, in case you're curious, for the other events again, because it really brings it into perspective when you see that we're charging a reasonable amount. We're not leaving money on the table, but we're also not pricing our vendors out.
Okay. Couple of quickies.
Oh.
This is for next year, it's not for this.
Correct.
So you'll have an opportunity to heads up everybody this, this year. We don't distinguish for nonprofits?
We do not at this time. It's just a blanket fee regardless of, you know, tax status.
Anything else? I think it's a very responsible move you're making to be sensitive to recouping cost and, but not, same time being exorbitant, so thank you for that. Anything else for Tony? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Mayor and council, on item C5, the next item on the agenda, I passed out a substituted version of the ordinance, which corrects one typographical error, changing the commercial building permit fees to $6 for each additional $1,000 or a fraction thereof. And so, what I'm reading now is the approval of the substituted ordinance, so that we don't need a motion from the floor to amend it. This is item C5, an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, to increase fees for the Development Services Department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move we adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a public hearing on all these, right?
Yes.
Let's open the public hearing on C5. Anyone want to speak to this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, council?
I have a question. It's along the line of these permit fees and such. We still on target for October for the online permitting process for these?
No, sir. Our current implementation date is November 12th, I believe, day after Veterans Day.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're able to hold to that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayfield.
Okay. Any other questions on this item, council? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Mayor and council, we also have a substituted version of item C6, which doesn't change the substance of the, of the ordinance at all, but we changed some outlining levels within that ordinance in order to make it clearer to understand, as opposed to what's in the current code, which has everything at the same outline level. So this is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the Fire Marshal's Office, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing on it. Anyone would like to speak to C6, now's the time. Again, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, Mayor, under fire alarm systems, it reads 100 for each 75 devices? So if it's 10 devices, it's still $100? If it's up to 75 devices, it's $100?
Yes, sir.
It's not $100 per device?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do like the simplification and the consolidation, and particularly you, I was talking to the city manager about this, the after-hours of fees, you know, so that people don't waste your time there. I think that's good, and I think it's a reasonable thing. Any contractor, if a builder had a contractor on site, and that contractor stood around and had to wait on the builder, they would be pretty upset. It's the same with us, when we go out to do an inspection, we need to get our business done and leave, and evidently, that's been somewhat of an issue occasionally, I guess. I don't want to, but I think that's a good, good change here, so. Okay, any other questions? Any comments? You want to add anything? Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Item C7 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees, to increase fees for police escorts for oversized loads and funeral processions, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item C7.
Second.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C7. If anyone wants to speak to this item, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. And council, any questions on this? Is Chief here?
Chief's not here. Captain Jameson's here. This is very similar to, it's the same ordinance we brought before y'all several months ago, so there's no change.
Yeah.
We're not distinguishing between funerals and oversized vehicles. Is there any particular reason?
It's just both, both of them are part of the fee.
They're both considered escorts.
Yes.
I meant, you know, we put people out there to escort them, whether it's the long, the load.
Would it use more officers or less, or more vehicles for that?
It depends on what the escort is. If it's, if it's the oversized vehicles, it may, if it's a large escort, or the funeral escort, depending on the amount of cars that are participating in it, it might determine, it might mean that we have to get more.
It's still a flat 100?
That's correct.
Breather, breather.
Okay. And I, I'm not to put anybody on the spot, but when you do escort, especially funerals, when do cities group too large to continue doing those? I just...
Now.
Now? Well, let me, let me be, I know that we've had this discussion, I've had this discussion, and it, you know, budgets are tight and whatnot, and there's, communities have to take, and I'm kind of talking to council, I guess, but you know, you have to look at what you're doing every once in a while, and see if it's still rational and fits. And traditional things like escorting a funeral are, you know, a bit emotional, and they're important. I'm not saying it's not necessarily not important. I was just wondering, at what point in time does a city not offer that? You know, like, I, obviously, large community, Houston, Austin, they do not do that, I don't think.
What the funeral homes have gone to is having the graveside service before the memorial service.
So, okay.
So you don't have the escort then involved.
Interesting. And that occurs in the larger communities more often now?
You have one church here that does that pretty regularly, or used to do it pretty regularly, so.
Okay.
On the other side of it, I mean, it still is a traffic issue. For a funeral, a lot of people don't realize that the traffic is going to continue without paying attention to the traffic light. And I've always appreciated the police at those locations, not necessarily so much the beginning or the ending. And I'm not sure if that's the case with oversized loads, or if they stop at the traffic lights or not, but that's the thing I see with funerals, as a concern, I guess.
Well, yeah, and I would suppose without an escort, they simply would just follow the normal traffic laws at that point in time, and be expected to, and whatnot. And I'm not suggesting that now, I'm just, it's something we're going to have to face again in the future, but obviously, you're increasing the fee to make sure you cover the cost, and which is, I suppose, it's appropriate at this time. Your analysis was pretty good, so.
My guess would be that the fees are so high in the larger city that that has led to the swapping, or else they just don't do it, but I'm sure you could hire off-duty to...
Even with a funeral escort, though, those cars going through those red lights, you, you shouldn't be doing that, really and truly. If you've got a police officer there blocking traffic, that's a different story, but a funeral escort, just because you're in a funeral procession does not give you the right to run that red light, so, and when you do that, you're assuming some liability with that, so.
I've seen...
Just kind of, anything else you want to, did I get that okay, Mark?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
I've seen funeral processions on the freeway in Houston. There was no, no officers attached to it, it was just, you could tell what they were doing, but anyway.
It, it becomes more of what the community's expectation is, and, you know, what the public wants. And I know conversation I've had before is, we do not require a funeral escort, so that's not a requirement. You know, it's a, if the funeral, if the family wishes to do that, then it's their choice, but it's not a requirement of anything, any laws that we have that requires them.
For now, we'll continue offering the service at the new fee, and if it comes up again, we'll tackle it another time. And I suppose staff would advise us...
Is that the same thing for oversized? Is that a requirement?
What specific?
It's escorting required.
Are they required? I don't know about oversized, I just know funerals are not.
I'm not, I'm not completely sure on that.
Probably not. My observation today, at the mall there at the Loop in Navarro, four, I think it was four semis were pulling the fan blades for the wind, the wind generators. I never realized how, up close and personal, how long those blades are. They, they were, but they were not using police, or they were using their own escort.
Right, oversized, oversized loads do need some type of escort, but it doesn't necessarily have to be law enforcement.
We don't make it a requirement.
But they stopped at the light, you're saying?
They held up traffic quite a bit to try to make that, that 90-degree there to go north on Navarro.
It's just like the concrete, Texas concrete, and those big beams they pull out, they, but they person, they, they stop traffic, whether they can or not, they do. And I know it's in the interest of all our safety, it aggravates people, I've actually had people complain to me about it, but, okay. Does the sheriff's office do any of this?
They, they do. I don't know whether they pass it on to the, through the funeral homes, but they do pick up some of our escorts that come out of the city that continue on to a county cemetery.
So the customer, I guess, can call either department, but I didn't know if they had a fee, or like ours, I just wondered. Okay.
We're just trying to cover some of our costs.
Right. All right, it was a good discussion, so. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item C8 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees, to adjust certain fees for services administered by the Public Works Department to offset the cost of providing these services, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C8. If there's any discussion on this, now's the time. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. And council, any questions on C8?
Yes. First of all, under the CM1, in Section 24, 124, that should, should that have a B right there? Because we're making reference to B, where it's increasing the fee for establishing the new three-quarters through two-inch.
I don't understand.
Okay, the CM1.
It's in the background.
It is in B. It is in B, right?
Right.
So, do we need to put that B right there?
Oh, okay.
Because that's the part, we have an A and a B.
I wouldn't think so, because when you go to that actual, it's got marked throughs on what's changing. On the second page, it's showing your marked throughs.
Okay. Okay, and on that page, on the connection fees, when you look at the rates that are increasing, like from the three-quarter, it's going up $50, from the one-inch, 65, but the one-and-a-half went up only 35. Can you explain that?
It's just based on, on the actual cost of the parks. We have a parts list, and for every meter installation, once a year, we ship that to a vendor, and they give us current pricing. They do that, and it also includes what we believe the average amount of time for each piece of equipment that will be involved in that job, and the average amount of labor on that job. And then, of course, we apply FEMA rates for the equipment, and we apply our current weighted hourly wage for a crew to be doing that work, and whatever it comes up to, that's the average here, and we might, we may round up or down like $2 to get to an even, even number, but, and that is the average cost, so some are going to cost us more than that, some are going to cost us less than that, but that's the average cost, and that's what we try to put here in the ordinance. We don't just, I didn't just go up a flat amount on each of these. That's why, it just depends on, on how much each of the individual components go up or down.
Okay. Can you just give me a definition of pre-stubbed and non-pre-stubbed?
Yes. When a, when a development goes in, a new subdivision, say, a developer will hire a contractor to install water and sewer lines, and they will tap the main and run a pre-stubbed pipe out to the property line, so that then, when, when a builder gets ready to build a home on that, they come and pay a fee to the city to get a meter installed, say it's a water meter. If, if, when it's a pre-stub, all we have to do is go out there, send a meter tech out with a meter and a meter box, and install on the end of that line. So it is a much lower fee than a non-pre-stub. The non-pre-stub occurs like in an existing infill development that may occur, and especially in like an older part of town where they're not, not pre-stubbed. The city has to go up there, take a backhoe, and dig up the main line in the street, tap the main, extend that pipe all the way out to the property line, backfill up in the roadway, redo the road, and then install a meter and a meter box. And so, obviously, our cost is much greater there, and so, hence the greater fee.
Okay.
Sounds like you got it very objective. You plug a cost-to-meter, your FEMA rates, it's not, there's no guesswork here, you're going off a formula.
That's correct.
Okay. That's good. Counsel, anything else on C? Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item C9 is an ordinance amending Chapter 10 and Chapter 17 of the Victoria City Code related to health and sanitation in parks and recreation, respectively, to provide for consistency in dealing with nuisance noise levels, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on C-9. If anyone would like to speak to this item, please come forward now. Seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing. Any deliberation?
I have a, a question on, and I'm struggling with the, the terminology, but the decibel level. Because when we looked at the potential of a quiet zone and looked at the potential of some warning horns, those were higher than these decibel levels. I just wanted to make sure that, that we wouldn't be running into problems ourselves.
Right. And Ms. Scott, I, I believe that this ordinance would only apply to electronically amplified noise, not a, a train horn that's being applied in that area. I gave some thought to that. Ms. Scott asked me this question earlier in the week so that I had some time to think about it ahead of time. And it, it's my understanding and my interpretation of what we're doing here that this is applying to electronically ampli, electronic amplification of other sounds, not an electric device that creates a sound on its own, like a horn.
The, the horn that, that we were looking at, that, that might.
Wayside horn.
Wayside.
The wayside horns that we would install or, or the train would install directly there on the sign, correct. I don't believe that that, that those would be covered by this ordinance.
It says, I guess, music. This is, this is entertainment music. Horns are just not.
That's essentially what this is, is jamboxes, boomboxes.
Same as a siren.
Our stereos.
Yeah, I mean, because a police car siren probably does exceed this.
Well, those go to safety as do railroad crossings and wayside.
Interesting.
Horns and whatnot. That wouldn't be as an entertainment item, I wouldn't think.
So if we told Tanner his fire trucks were violating the ordinance, okay.
Well, I wouldn't consider that entertainment either.
We could arrest.
Perhaps it would be for certain people in our city.
We do also have an exception in here for people operating on behalf of the governmental entity. So sirens are accepted. So Tanner, you can relax.
My dog doesn't like it, but anyway.
Where are the penalties?
The penalty may not be set out in here because it's in other places in the, in the ordinance. But it does say that it is an offense. A person commits an offense there at the bottom of Page 1, Section B. And in Section 1-8 of the code, we have the general offense saying that any offense of our code is a class C misdemeanor.
And sometimes it occurs to me, people don't.
It has five hundred dollars, two hundred dollars.
It does?
Yeah, down here, number five.
Not exceed, no, there it is.
For clarification for people watching, we are, previously, the city code used four different standards, one for bars and other places, one for the parks and one for vehicles. This combines them all. So it's simplification. I just want to say that, because not everybody has this in front of them, so.
How does it work for those concerts?
Concerts? Like Boot Fest? I don't know.
There are time limits in this ordinance. And so when you reach that ten o'clock time limit, the noise level would have to drop. And it's my understanding that city manager schedules Boot Fest specifically to comply with those noise ordinances.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, it is. I see that there, ten o'clock.
Yeah, we're probably exceeding that this year.
Well, on Fridays and Saturdays, it goes to twelve.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We, we get done by then.
But Boot Fest stops at eleven, right?
Stops at eleven, yes.
Because I've always wanted it to go to twelve, but anyway, I lose that fight, so.
Well, it's not just about noise. I have other reasons for that.
I understand. Okay, any further discussion on number nine?
This is also addressing the vehicles that drive by and are rattling the glass and the.
That's right. Car skis and everything else? Yes.
Good.
I guess while we're talking about this real quick, you know, we get complaints, but an officer can't do anything unless they witness it, correct? And even if, if you had a constituent sit there with their phone and video it, I don't think showing that video to an officer is enough to, right? Well, I don't want to get into the courtroom here, but just saying that officer has to see this or hear this stuff.
If there's a citizen who has a complaint about a noise level and there's not an officer on hand to make that citation, citizens can always come down to municipal court and file a complaint themselves. That complaint would then get investigated by our prosecutor. And if she believes that it's a violation of the ordinance, she can file that charge herself. So there is another avenue, other than just a police officer hearing it himself.
Would a, I mean, license plate number help in that case? If, you know, the officer can't see it, but you know, if you can get a license plate number, if it's somebody that's just driving by?
It would certainly help identify which vehicle that is, yes.
Okay, and then they can still come to municipal court?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Before you do the consent agenda, we need to pull E-1, is that correct?
That's correct.
I failed to mention that earlier.
That's okay. When we got there, I was going to explain that. We're.
You can wait then, I just.
Well, I, we're, we'd like to pull it because Chief Craig believes that instead of outsourcing this, he visited with somebody at the Health Department, the state Health Services, and they believe they can help him and he can do it internally. So we're going to attempt to do it internally. And if we realize after a few months we can't, then we'll bring something back. But Gilbert's willing to help him, so.
That's Chief Tanner?
Yes, that's Chief Tanner. What did I say?
E-2?
E, E-1. I meant to mention at the beginning, and I forgot, so it. Okay, now let's just do the two items on consent.
Two items on the consent agenda. First is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 18th, 2015. And the second is a resolution awarding the 2014-15 Gate Valve and Fire Hydrant Maintenance Project to DMD Consultants Incorporated in the amount of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we skip E-1 and go to E-2.
Item E-2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to settle a potential lawsuit brought against the city of Victoria by the estate of George Anderson in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and declaring an effective date.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion?
Would it be relevant for just the record and for TV to read the background information?
I'd be happy to give a short background on, on the case. This is a situation where a citizen was injured when he was receiving medical services from the ambulance. It was very difficult to determine whether the injury that he suffered as a result of the accident was, was related to the accident itself or whether it was related to the underlying medical condition that caused the ambulance to be called out there in the first place. And so it's a very complicated and confusing case that would have been very expensive to try. The family decided not to go forward with the lawsuit in exchange for the city helping them pay for the legal bills that they've already accrued.
Okay, thank you.
So TML's our insurance company and they're, they recommend this as well?
That's correct.
That we do settle this, so, okay. It's an unfortunate situation, but this is the best way to deal with it, so. Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E-3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute termination rider agreements with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the abandonment of certain water pipelines at various locations within the city of Victoria and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we approve item E-3.
Second.
Discussion on E-3.
These are things I take it we don't need and don't think we're going to need in the future.
That's correct.
Already abandoned, I guess.
Yeah, and you know, I see Lynn. Would you mind getting up and trying to remind? I know some of the count, we've talked about this before on the work that the railroads do, and good reminder.
On the good one?
Yes, please.
Yes, this is, this, these abandonments come about as a result of research that Union Pacific was doing in preparation for adding an additional track that will cross Goodwin Avenue right close to East Street. And of course, you know, we've already, the city has already made East Street a one-way street there with a right turn only onto Goodwin, also in preparation for this project. And of course, the railroad will also be installing quad gates at that location across Goodwin Avenue. So they'll be putting medians in at that low, location too, right on each side of the track. And their research as to what pipelines were under the, the tracks that those, in that general vicinity, turned up these three locations that they weren't sure, because they're, some of them are very old. They came back to the city and wanted to know whether they're still active. And we did some research. They're no longer active. They're abandoned pipelines, already abandoned in place. So to clean up their, their paperwork, they, they want us to abandon the, the crossing agreements or terminate the crossing agreements, basically.
Very good. And then also, as was mentioned at the last meeting, I'll try to reach out to them, and we're going to have a little discussion about the North Street crossing.
And, and the city engineer has talked to them in, in conjunction with this project about coming back and doing something with that North Street crossing. Now, we'll see, you know, but we have been in discussions with them about that.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll talk more, so.
It seems to be very difficult to get a crossing permit when we need to cross a pipeline. Is there anything in this agreement that would offer anything going forward?
Well, no.
This is just the abandonment of, of some existing pipeline crossing.
We've got the existing agreement for, to close a few in preparation for opening the next anticipated one, which I guess would be Ball Airport at some point in the future. But that's, that's tied, locked in, if I recall.
That's correct.
So that they, as they keep changing the parameters and expecting us to close more and more crossings in order to gain one, we did lock that one in.
Right, now that's roadway, that's roadway crossings, and this is pipeline?
But there's a, there's a litany of issues that, that we can start a dialogue with them. I know staff has their contacts, but we might expand that a little.
You, you did mention, just in passing, a little bit about the design of the, this new crossing. And it sounds like the type of crossing that we would be looking toward in the future. It sounds like one that would support a quiet zone if we went that direction. So thank you for the work that you did to get that.
That was my question. Is it a quiet, will it be a quiet zone at this point?
It would be quiet zone eligible if it connects with some other quiet zone eligible crossings. But it, it is, it is a, it in and of itself is, will be designed and installed so that.
In the future, it will.
Yes, sir.
We won't have to send money on that one.
That's correct.
It's, it's one more to check off the list, out of however many there are. So. Very good. No further comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item E-4 is a resolution approving change order number three to the downtown water and sanitary sewer replacement project with Palacios Marine and Industrial Coatings Incorporated in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, fourteen dollars and fourteen cents, bringing the new contract amount to three-million-nine-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents, authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute the change order and declaring an effective date.
Who would we adopt E-4?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any questions?
Do you anticipate any other large change orders where it's going to make a, you know, cardinal change to the contract?
To this contract, no, I do not. This is, you know, this section of, this is primarily De Leon Street, between North Street and Rio Grande. And it is part of the Oliver Welder addition that we're planning to repave in FY 2016. But it, De Leon has bad utilities that need to be replaced. And so the, the, the previous limits for the downtown projects were North, South, East, and West Streets. So this is north of North Street. And we have been working to try to get that little set of utilities replaced in one of these projects. And we're finally now have an opportunity to do so. We're right there, and we have funding available to do so. And so this change order will enable us to get that done so that next year, we can pave those areas.
Okay.
Does De Leon runs from Rio Grande to North?
Yes.
That's really bad.
Yes, it is.
That is pretty much gravel.
And we'll be, we'll be doing that in Wheeler and, and Section O. But, but the utilities are only on De Leon Street.
When y'all do Wheeler, y'all going to close that ditch?
We're going to put in curb and gutter, yes, ma'am.
My sister will be very happy.
Everybody will be.
That's right, Jean.
After it's through, not in between.
She's going to complain before, but.
Well, that is also the historic district.
Is it, it's historic district, you said?
Yes, he said yes.
No?
Well, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure.
It's not in Victoria Heights?
Oh, it ends at North Street, okay.
It ends at North Street, but then picks up on Rio Grande, doesn't it? So that one sliver isn't in the historic district. That's pretty quirky.
All right. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item E-5 is a resolution awarding the US-77 North Annex Station Water and Sanitary Sewer Improvements Phase II Project to Palacios Marine and Industrial Coatings Incorporated at their low bid of one-million-nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and three cents, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E-5? Second.
Okay. Questions?
I'm surprised to see someone from California bid.
Yes, we, we advertise the Texas bid system online, and sometime we get out-of-state bidders.
Mobilization cost. He's going to lease equipment here, but his bid, yeah, it's, wow. We don't, it ain't worked that way in Texas, does it?
It's quick.
Two hundred, yeah, two hundred days, fastest. That's interesting. I'm just glad you got five bids. It's always good to see more bidders.
Yeah, I was interested to see that, too, that it's usually just two or three. So that was good. Do you think there's a slowdown a little bit?
It's a little different, a little different project. It's got a lift station involved in it and pipeline. So it, it brings out a little bit different contractor than you would typically get on just a pipeline project.
Those low three were tight. It was good.
Yes.
And so again, this just improves our ability to serve that far north part of town where there's growth going forward. Yeah, you're reaching capacity now, so. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
That's it?
Just a reminder, we have a council meeting next Tuesday, the 8th, and another one on the 10th, and then another one on the 15th. And then you'll get a couple of weeks off.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned.